Good.
Good.
Good afternoon, everybody, or good evening, everybody. This is a nice crowd. I would like the January meeting. Get a lot of work done in that. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order at six oh one. And we will start off with the invocation and Mr. Powell, would you do the prayer?
Be glad.
Let's go ahead and say standing for the pledge afterwards.
Let's pray. Father, we are so grateful to be in this place and call all that growth. It is a real community. It has a sense about it of friends taking care of friends. Lord, we just ask you to continue that. The wonder of being in a place you can call home and have it really mean something. For that, we're grateful. Tonight, Lord, we take up some important business in the city and we just ask that you would give your favor to this council and those who speak before it so that they can communicate clearly and that things can get decided rightly and that you would give your wisdom to all so that this place can be blessed with good things and continue with those good things. Lord, in doing that, language is important. And we just ask that you bring clarity to what sometimes is confusion. I know legislators intend to make it clear, Lord, but sometimes they miss the mark. And, Lord, we just ask that you shine your light on these things, let this community hear the ideas and let the good decisions be made. Lord, there are people who work here and who do all the work in the city and we just ask you to bless them especially. Thank you for all their good works. We pray all these things in Jesus.
Amen. I pray that religion is given alive and that the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one vision, under God, indivisible, with a libertarian justice for all. Thank you. Okay, so roll call. We have a full council here tonight. And as we move on, I will ask that we, is there a motion for approving the agenda?
I may go ahead and approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
I second.
There any discussion? We didn't have any changes. Actually, I do have an amendment, I'm sorry. I've cut it. I'm going to make one. I would like to actually get the counsel of our attorney to come in. We had a moratorium on building in the downtown Culver Lake. And I would like to extend that past where it was to include another six months so we can finish up the Envision Walnut Grove Initiative where we are putting a lot of information together that would affect that downtown Culver Lake and zoning issues there. And I just need to know, can we add that in your whole business through the business? Can we extend it?
I think you can put it on the agenda. It has an old business characteristic or renewal that could be new. Just lawyer and clarity. We would never put that on the agenda as an action item under our advice because frankly, you need to have moratoriums get imposed before people jump the gun and get back. So it's always done as an amendment at the need in order to make sure that nobody takes advantage of the situation.
So adding that into your whole business, Steve? Okay, and it would be amendment to the moratorium on the zoning, for zoning actions on the downtown Culver Lake.
So then I will amend my motion to include the change of the amendment to the moratorium on zoning on the downtown Culver Lake.
Lynn, do you have that? You good with that? About the amendment? Okay, great. I just want to make sure. All right, so you've amended.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, the show of hands? Thank you. People go ahead and move on to our appointments at this time. Are you prepared, Mr. Powell? For appointments?
I'm prepared. You mean to accept one, I am. But otherwise, if you have something for me to do, I'll be glad.
Could we swear, people, Lynn, do you have the...
I can do half of that. And the part that the judge would recognize because he does receive them regularly. We do a long form by signature on that I didn't bring.
Okay.
But I can do the short form, which everybody will appreciate.
We'll do that.
And give it to whoever you want me to give it to.
Absolutely. We're going to be doing our deputy clerk tonight, Sonya Cox. We are going to be doing our municipal court judge, the Honorable Sam Barth. And for our attorneys, how do we do that? Can we, will Sam Barth do it for you?
You could do that in reverse. I would recommend for city attorneys, you don't see that very often, for city attorneys to actually take a note.
Okay.
We do need to do the same thing we'll do for everybody who takes notes tonight and that is we'll sign on on that log.
All right.
In spite of this.
All right. Let's go ahead and stay here. Can we do it at the same time with both of them up here taking notes?
We can do that, but it's sort of a little bit easier, probably more appropriate to do separately.
Okay, all right. Then we can do that. I was trying to say, we don't need to.
It's short.
It's wonderful to have our judge from municipal court here tonight. Sometimes we go a few years without him coming to the actual meeting and so it's nice to have him here tonight. I get to see him in court every once in a while, but it's really nice to have him here tonight for the meeting. And of course, Sonya being here tonight too. And we already sworn Lynn her at our last meeting. So we're ready to go when you are.
I think the first thing would be to approve those appointments by motion.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the appointments? So is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor, show of hands?
Sorry, I was running.
All in favor, wonderful. And it's wonderful to have people who have worked with the city for so long and continue working with cities. It adds continuity and it's very, very nice. So thanks, guys.
Okay, Sonya, it's time.
Great.
I'm going to read you this. And if you're in agreement with that, you would just say, I do solemnly swear.
Okay.
I, Sonya Cox, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully perform the duties of Assistant Clerk and Municipal Court Clerk of the City of, for the Council of the City of Walnut Grove, Georgia. And I will support and defend the charter thereof as well as the Constitution and laws of the State of Georgia and of the United States of America. So help me God.
I do solemnly swear.
Thank you, Sonya. Congratulations, everybody. Hopefully we'll follow that same procedure. I, Sam Barth, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully, faithfully perform the duties of Municipal Court Judge for the City of Walnut Grove, Georgia, and that I will support and defend the charter thereof as well as the Constitution and laws of the State of Georgia and of the United States of America. I do solemnly swear. Thank you. Congratulations.
You're right back. Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
We really appreciate you.
Thank you. Appreciate you all.
It's Sonya, thanks, Bill. I see you every day.
Okay.
Tony, thank you for leading us through that. Appreciate that. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. Council has received the minutes in advance. Thank you, Lynn. And for a few changes that were suggested, they were made and resent out to the council. And then we also have financials there for our audit and for L N C O planning, who we have brought in as a as-needed engineering company. And those are two agenda, or two invoices that we have. McNair McLamore is the 21-5 for the audit. And then we have L N C O for... The reason I'm stating this is because on the agenda, it does not state the amount. Do we have that in the... L N C O invoice for the... And that was for different projects throughout the city, including Stormwater, Sun Emerald Co., the old agent 138 that dealt with other grading issues, et cetera. He's worked with our public works department also. And so at this time, I will ask if there is a motion for the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent.
I second that.
Are there any questions? Yes, ma'am.
On the financials that I mentioned to you earlier?
Yes. Yes, we did ask Venus to do that. In that one area, and I will highlight the line item because that was brought to my attention by Miss McClanahan, and then you also brought it up tonight, under penalties and interest on delinquent taxes. No, we have not brought in $287,018.75. That we would either be in a really good shape or our city would be in a really bad shape. It is a mistake. It was put in the wrong line item. I'm very aware of it. I have not had the opportunity to get that switched to the correct line item, but it will be moving there by the next meeting.
I agree.
Line item square. It is in the taxes.
Property tax.
Yeah, property tax. Thirty-one point one of...
Yeah.
Right? Yeah. It's just in the wrong spot, but then you bring that to me.
It's not for line item or... Income.
Is there any other questions? Yes. Okay. All right. Those in favor, please raise your hands for the consent agenda.
Aye.
All in favor, thank you. And Linda, thank you for reminding me. You're welcome. Okay. We're going to go ahead and go on to our public presentation. I'm very happy to announce that this year we have our audit done in January. Last year when we came in and all of a sudden we're behind on the audit and having to go do that. So it feels like we've been here before, very recently, because we have. But we're back on track and reviewing what we're supposed to be doing. And at this time, I'm going to ask Kurt to come up. Kurt is the one who came and worked with us on the audit and asked for all sorts of paperwork. And since we didn't have a clerk at the time, actually, we had a clerk who helped out in the beginning, but I am very familiar with the audit process now, as is very told. And I feel like we have set up ourselves for a very successful, easier audit in the future, and that's what I'm looking forward to. But thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Brad. Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Kurt Harrison. I'm a CPA with McNair McLamore and the Woods. We audited the financial statements of governmental activities, business-type activities, strictly presented company movement, and each major fund of the City of Walnut Grove as of before the year ended June 30th, 2024. We issued our report on November 20th, 2024. In our opinion, the city's financial statements present fairly in all material respects, and we have issued an unmodified clean opinion. We did not identify any deficiencies in internal control that we consider to be material weaknesses. We conducted our audit in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States, and the standards applicable to financial audits contain the government audit standards. We are required to be an independent of the city and also follow other ethical requirements related to the audit. Our audit was consistent with the plan, scope, and timing that we previously communicated. We encountered no significant difficulties in dealing with representatives of the city relating to the performance of the audit. We also had no disagreements with city representatives during the course of our... I have to flip to page six of the financial statements and see the balance sheet of the governmental funds. And the city has general fund, the American, the ARPA fund, the American Rest and Plan Act Fund, the 2019 SPAS fund. The general fund total assets at 6324 totaled a little over $1.4 million. The majority of that being cash of a little over $1.3 million, $40,000 due from other governments, and $22,000 prepaid items. The general fund had total liabilities of $51,000 with accounts, accounts paid with[903.93][903.95]$30,000, accrued expenditures of $9,300, and due to other funds of a little over $11,000. Total fund balance for the general fund at year end was $1.37 million. Of that, $22,000 is non-spendable, which is related to the pre-pays, and the remaining one point, almost $1.35 million was unassigned. In the ARPA fund, the total assets is a little over $500,000. Total liabilities equal that as unearned revenues for ARPA funds that had not yet been expended. And so there is no fund balance for the ARPA fund. The 2019 SPAS fund had total assets of just over $975,000, $940,000 of that being cash and cash equivalents, and a little under $36,000 due from other governments. SPAS fund had no liabilities at year end, and total fund balance, all being restricted for capital outlay, was $975,000. Put over to page eight. Those, the revenues and expenditures for their revenues. The general fund had total revenues of $1.16 million. Total expenditures of $941,000. Total other financing sources of $70,000 to bring in net change, increase, and fund balance of almost $300,000, bringing total fund balance to $1.37 million. There was no activity in the ARPA fund. And there was a little activity in SPAS fund, mainly the revenues that were gotten in, only $371 of expenditures. So the SPAS fund fund balance increased by almost $400,000 from $577,000 to $975,000. Flip to page 11. Let's see, the general fund budget and actual. That far right column varies with final budget. All of those numbers are positive. That's a good... If they had been negative, that would mean that one department or function went over budget, but no department did for the year, so... Put over to page 13. See the statement of net position for the city's water treatment plant fund. It had total current assets of a little over $1.2 million, consisting primarily of cash at $1.19 million. Total non-current assets are made up entirely of the capital assets, which is 216,000 non-depreciable assets and a little over $2 million of depreciable assets and then accumulated depreciation. In liabilities, the water treatment plant fund had a little over $1 million in total liabilities. Of that, $506,000 was due to other funds, due to the ARPA fund, and another $540,000 in the notes paid. Total net position was just under $2.4 million with 1.7 of that net investment in capital assets, and the remaining $682,000 under street. On the next page, page 14. See the water treatment plant, water treatment plant fund had total operating revenues of just under $190,000. Total operating expenses of just under $120,000. Total non-operating expenses of $3200, and about $18,000 transferred in, bringing the net change and net position an increase of $82,797. Flip back to the notes, page 25. Look at... See the capital assets scheduled for the governmental activities. There were no asset additions where it's spoken within the current year. The only activity gained the current year depreciation for those assets of $130,000. Related to these capital assets, there's long-term debt outstanding of $97,000, bringing the net investment in capital assets to just under $1.7 million. On the next page, 26. See, be scheduled for the business-type activities capital assets. There was a little, a small amount of asset additions in construction progress of $22,000. Land of $125,000, total construction progress of $91,000, total assets being depreciated a little over $2.5 million. The business-type activities capital assets had a little under $85,000 of depreciation in the current year. $541,000 of related long-term debt outstanding, bringing the net investment in capital assets for the business-type activities to $1.7 million. Last thing I would like to thank Mayor Moncrief and Councilmember Davis for their help. It's not every day that the mayor and the council member are there pulling invoices for you and getting documentation. So that was, I think that was very good. But thank you for...
You're welcome.
There's any questions?
I don't have any questions. So we passed him. We passed.
My findings.
And the report hasn't been turned in to the state.
Yes, the report is before December 30th.
Yes, we got that done. We continue. Yes. On track. Thank you for coming. Very glad to be here. Very good speaking. Yes, you did. Yes, you did. And since you were approved tonight, will give me that. We'll see you next year. I'll try not to call too early this time. I called and I wanted him to come out and he goes, I can't come out yet, there's some rules. Okay, all right. Didn't want to have... Thank you very much. Thank you for coming tonight. Okay. So we are going to move on now, and we are going to do the planning and zoning administrative report. And I'm just going to go ahead and read that out like I've told you all before in the past. When there's nothing on the agenda where our planning and zoning administrator needs to be here to answer questions, I just ask him to submit a report and I go ahead and read that out so that everybody's aware of what's going on in the City of Walnut Grove. And that is one of the situations tonight. And so I'll go ahead and read what he has said. So this is coming from Joe Walter, our zoning administrator. Number one is active rezoning cases, variances, et cetera. We don't have any of that on the agenda right now. Site plans under review or benchmark excavating the office warehouse site development plans. All approvals are received and ready for permitting. Stonehaven subdivision construction plans, reliant homes, which is down 81 past the elementary school, including amenity area plans. Comments are addressed and we're waiting on a few approvals from council and another agency. Stonehaven subdivision amenity area, PPI, which is precision planning, has issued comments and we're waiting on those agency approvals. Elevation truck sales, which is over on Guthrie Cemetery Road. We have reviewed site plans and we're awaiting a revised plan. Church at the Grove expansion, PPI comments addressed, and the agency approvals are received. And PPI is stamp plans and issue approval package has already come in, and we're ready to go ahead and do a land disturbance permit for them also. Under active recent land disturbance permits issued by the city, we have the Walnut Grove gas station that's still moving along, the on-site bud commercial pays for L D P. There's no recent activity on that, but that's still out there. The S and E cabinet shop over on Guthrie Cemetery Road is under construction and on Industrial Parkway at 1261 Industrial Parkway. They're under construction. Any other active projects going on is the Grove Park, which is being done by Walton County, and they're working along. And then Envision Walnut Grove is the visioning process that starts next Tuesday, put on by the city of Walnut Grove, and it's actually January 21st, not January 11, 2025. And I'd like you all after that. Inactive projects are maximum R X credit on Guthrie Cemetery Road, and nothing's going on with that. And that is the zoning administrative report. If you'd like to see that, it is up on the website in the agenda packet under meetings for 2025. So we're going to go ahead and move on after that. And I always do this after I do the zoning administrative report. Get off track, but I found it. We're going to go ahead and to the library report and invite this data receiver up. This is some of our favorite times of the meetings.
Yeah, this is my favorite time. I love coming here. I feel like it's an honor, it's a privilege. I love having a good relationship with our city and that we have such a great city that loves literacy and libraries and they attend our programs. It's just fun. It's really fun. I just came back from a manager meeting in Madison. We have them every month, except for next month because next month we do our annual staff development day, which is especially helpful this year because we have so many new employees in the library system. So it's one day that we all get together and learn about all the things that everybody who works in the library needs to know, which I grabbed it into one day. Anyway, I'm really excited. I did have a typo that I corrected on here. National Chocolate Cake Day is January 27th, not February 27th.
We'll be there.
So it's really important. Yes, come to the library and get your chocolate cake. How I... That, no, I have no idea.
Maybe I'll... We'll be there.
Yes, maybe I wanted to do it again.
Have to wait until we're gone, then.
I need them and they will come. So yeah, the manager meeting today, the reason that I bring that up is because we spent the second half of our manager meeting talking about literacy, especially literacy rates and especially in Georgia. And I realized the impact that libraries can have on bridging the gap with the school system, but I also wanted to make all of you aware that you play a role as well. Children seeing you read, children seeing you visit the library, children seeing you encourage them to go to the library and attend programs, all of that makes a difference. So I want to thank all of you for supporting education and literacy and for supporting our library. It is a big deal. And the reason I'm thinking about that is because we are still hiring for two positions, the cleaner and the substitute. Literacy affects your ability to fill a job application. Okay? So it's not that we don't have candidates, we just don't have the right candidates for what we need. So that is a big deal. But I have good news. We might be getting a cleaner, sharing the cleaner that Logan Bell was using. They're going to ask her, she's newer, so they're going to ask her, I know her well as a patron in Walnut Grove. So it'd be nice for my team and I to not have to clean the library every day, which we've been doing since July. So it'd be nice to hand that over to somebody who can do it on a deeper level. We had a brand-new program this month in January, which I was able to attend. It was a health and wellness program on goal setting. And Ms. Stephanie Ta, who led the program, did a fabulous job. She's going to do wellness program every single month, and the one in February is on managing stress and emotional resilience. But it was excellent, her presentation. We learned about SMART goals, PAC goals, and it was just very helpful. And I highly recommend these brand-new wellness programs. While we're on the topic of new classrooms, I'll mention real quickly, I'm also planning summer, which I've been talking about, but this summer, we're going to go big. So we have all of our regulars coming back, the Poodle Show, the Magic Show, the Reptile Show. We have a flamenco dancer coming this summer.
Yes.
Which I'm really excited about. I've seen her perform at the performer showcases that I've attended, but this will be our first year having her at our library, so I'm excited. And we also have Jennifer Daniels, who is a country music... And we also have Jennifer Daniels, who is a country music performer. She performs in Tennessee, but she does a lot of library performances and she was highly recommended. And it's an interactive show, so some of the children can get up and participate with different things. But I heard she's very engaging and it's a really fun show. So the theme this summer is Color of Your World. So it's an art theme and I want to support all the arts. So I'm going to be booking more performers as well, but I'm excited to have a full schedule of activities. We're very busy in the summertime. I don't, Ms. Linda, you've been there quite a bit in the summer. To get a big crowd, which is wonderful. So I want to give back to the community because of their participation and attendance and support of our. But everything is good. We will be closed Monday for MLK Day. And then we also kind of go, our director goes by what the school system does a lot in determining our weather closures because we may get weather next week as well. So I don't make that determination, that comes from our director and she bases it off of the local communities, what the county and city, what they are doing. Okay, thank you so much for salting the library ahead of the weather. It was nice to come in and not have to worry about that, so we really appreciate it. Thank you for looking out for us. Does anybody have any questions for me?
How many pieces of chocolate cake?
So here's the thing. We might only give you one chocolate cake, but we have a seed library now. So every time you visit the library, you can get a packet of seeds and they're seasonal. So you can plant them and then when you come back in the spring, you can get different seeds that you can plant. So I'm really excited for them, that the master gardeners now have the seeds. It's very popular. Every single visit to the library, patrons can get a free packet of seeds. So if the cake doesn't get you in, maybe the seeds will. I'm glad, I'm glad. But thank you so much for everything.
Always nice when you come up with your things. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to public comment. Does anybody have any comments that they would like to share? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on. We're moving on to old business. We're starting off the year with a kind of a light agenda, but the HB five-eight-one public hearing calendar, that is in the agenda packet. We will be having our first hearing, which is open to the public to come and make comments about HB five-eight-one. So our first meeting will be, for the public hearing will be on January thirtieth at six PM. And then we'll have two subsequent public hearings, both on February thirteenth, one at ten AM and one at our regularly scheduled meeting. And those will happen at the beginning of the meetings and that helps us meet the requirements set forth by the state in case the city decides to opt out. And that's a requirement that we have to deal with HB five-eight-one. We'll be talking a little bit about what HB five-eight-one also is. We popped it out of the floor, but I'm just announcing those dates and they're going in the paper and appropriate timeline to make sure that we're meeting the requirements of the state. Okay. We're going to go ahead and move on if there are actual needed on that. Sewer expansion bid calendar update. Just wanted to let you know that there is one big change on that. This is something that Joe Walter brought to the city before. And this is the bid calendar for the Walnut Grove LAS sewer plant expansion. We just had to change that first date to be able to do the proper advertisement. It's in the paper. It's on the procurement website. So what we're doing right now is waiting on bids. There's a pre-bid meeting coming up on one twenty-seven twenty-five, which is not mandatory. And all these meetings are going to be held here in this municipal building. Then bids are due by two eleven twenty-five. Bids are open at eleven AM on two twelve. Council work session on two twenty-seven. We will be discussing those bids and seeing the recommendations from PPI, Precision Planning Engineering. That's the company working with us on this. And then at the council meeting following that work session, we will award the bid to the company that we decide on. Okay? And then from there, we're off to the races, getting the sewer plant going and getting all that construction happening. So the only date that changed off of the original, which you gave Joe and I the authority to do, was that first date and we changed it to twenty twenty twenty-five. And it's gone. So under old business there, we added the amendment to the amendment to the moratorium on zoning actions in the downtown overlay. And I believe at this time I would ask for a motion on that. Is that correct, Tony?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion on the amendment to on the amendment on zoning actions on the downtown overlay? In the length of time?
I make a motion that we approve the amendment to extend the moratorium for zoning acts in the downtown overlay. Until, until the until our envisioned project is ever in our ordinance is done, so six months? What, six months?
Is that what you'd like to make? Is that your?
Yeah, six months.
Okay, is there a second month on that motion?
Second then.
Okay, is there any discussion? All in favor? Please show a brief.
I think yes.
Okay. Is there something wrong with my scene?
No, okay. All right. No, I was just thinking, should we kind of give some explanation for someone that might watch the meeting or someone is here, just that, that the reasoning for extending that is because we are in the planning stage with a lot of our downtown and things there. And having that in place before we approve additional building just makes sense.
Very good point. Thank you.
Fair for clarity, that's, that'd be like six PM on July sixteenth. The sixth month here.
This is.
That's when it comes off?
Yeah. Okay. We're going to go ahead and move on to new business. There is none. We have a pretty heavy work session scheduled for the thirtieth. So we're going to just go ahead and move on to our reports. I have a Public Works report right here from our Public Works manager. Please keep in mind when he submits these reports, he's giving a general idea of what's going on. The extent and the scope of what they do in Public Works on a daily basis could not be contained in a report. So at the sewer plant, they're working to keep the water levels low and we've had, they haven't had any broken pipes with all of this freezing. And the sewer is running smoothly. It's interesting, that sewer plant usually runs almost every day when they're spraying out to the spray field. Once they spray out into the spray field and if it's going to freeze, they have to go out and manually drain them out each time and allow it all to come out and then they have to go and close them again when they want to run them again. It is a very time-intensive process. And for us to not have any broken pipes, that says a lot about the job that they're doing out there. For the city park, we had some limbs down from the snowstorm. No damage to any structures, few. And we had a tree down at city hall, which the guys are working on getting broken down and cleaned up. And it was a tree that needed to come down, so Mother Nature did us a favor. Saved some money. Around the city, they cleaned up some limbs off of the runway and salted ice patches and and all the Christmas decorations have been taken down, banners are taken down and stored away. And they're keeping us safe at the city hall and at the library with salting everything. And that's something that they think seriously, make sure nobody's falling. It's the liability issues. And that's really the majority of what they've been doing, other than some of the smaller projects that they're getting done around here. We have had evaluations with all of the employees in Public Works and they are all very pleased with the results of the evaluations. And we have been able to go ahead and give our guys some raises this year. Some nice raises based on what we had budgeted in the budget. And they all seem very pleased. So I'm glad that we were able to do that and that you all voted to make sure that that happened for our guys and for our staff at city hall too. And that's it from Public Works. And then we will move on to our city clerk report.
All right, I'm doing it.
Good.
The tickets from the clerk's report, State Patrol had two and the county had three. And there was no pavilion baseball runs for December. And then going on to the accounts, the general operating account is seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty-three cents. And then the sewer service district is nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars and one cent. And the SLOSS is one million, one hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars and fifty-seven cents. Money market is one million, four hundred and eighty-six dollars, three hundred and fifteen, like one million, four hundred and eighty-six thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars and six cents. And then the DDA account is ninety thousand, two fifty-two, forty-four. And sewer money market account is one million, one hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty-three cents.
Thank you. Very much. Code enforcement did not submit a report, but I spoke with Greg Cappleton today. He's actually told me that he thinks he's going to be able to cut back his hours some because the city is responding so positively to everything. They've been able to clean up a lot of the issues. A lot of the citizens have done really great jobs getting things cleaned up. And it was just a matter, I think, of encouraging and making everybody realize that, you know, we all have to be held accountable to each other to keep our city beautiful. So it's been great having Greg here. He's going to probably cut down some hours and the citizen responding has been just wonderful. So we're very encouraged by that. There is still some, a little bit of work to do, but there always will be. But we're very, very fortunate to have Greg and his style in dealing with citizens and talking to citizens that have really been very positive for the city. So I'm really happy about that. For the mayor's report, where do I start? There's so much going on and there's so much happening and training going on and, and everything. It seems like it's, there's always something to do. But some of the highlights this week were, we have lights at the ballpark now. They are up and running. We have our first practicing, have practice happening tonight, which is very exciting. That's something you all decided on that was important to you and to the citizens and it came to fruition. Really happy about that. Got some major projects about to start over in Magnolia Springs. We're waiting to get on the schedule over there for the company that's doing the work, but we should be hearing soon, hopefully. Not hopefully, we will be hearing soon. And I'm looking forward to getting that off the checklist. Like I said, evaluations were done for all employees and they were very positive and we had some great responses and ideas coming from our employees, which is always encouraging. And everybody's still with us, so that's, that's a good thing too. Very happy about that. Somebody made me lunch and brought it to me at work the other day. It was a very busy day and that was very nice. Our new city clerk is working out fabulously. She is just clamoring for me to train her on more and more things and she and I, she doesn't realize. Next week, she's going to get sick because next week is a week of a lot of things going on. But I'm very encouraged. I'm very excited about the Invision Walnut Grove coming up. We have somebody from the county coming to talk about the county park and giving a little presentation, which I just found out today that I'll let you know about. They're going to be giving a presentation. The church actually came over, we were holding the event and asked for some more flyers so that they can start handing those out. I'm going to the Church of the Grove on Sunday to both the services and I'll be speaking with Russ up on stage, inviting people to come and kind of giving them an idea of what's going on and what to expect. We have sent out, we have our social media guru, who's been getting everything out to everybody and we've been visiting the city businesses, inviting people to come. And they all seem very interested in what's happening. So we hope to have a good turnout on the twenty-first, which is next Tuesday. We hope the snow doesn't come until Wednesday because I don't think I could handle rescheduling this again. So I'll keep you my fingers crossed. And you know, hopefully after the first one even, if we have a good turnout, hopefully people will hear more and more about it and be responsive. We had a lot of very good interaction with our community and our citizens after the storm, during the storm, before the storm. And that was a group effort to make sure we got information out to everybody. And everybody in the city responded positively. Unfortunately, we had Public Works Department, Public Works Manager, who got out when the roads were safe to make sure everything was good for everybody. And so there's lots of great things going on. I had a lot of really great interaction with a lot of citizens. They seem to come by and just want to chat. And we make sure that we find the time to just chat. And I had two people call today who want to come in and talk, talk with us just to talk and find out what's going on. And that to me is very encouraging. So things are happening, good things are happening. Some days are tougher than others, but it's all, it's all going in a positive direction, so I'm very pleased about that. And once again, thank you all for all of your help and your, your assistance in the different ways that you're doing it. Couldn't do it without you. But really. And so that's it for my, my comments. We're going to go to town hall if anybody has anything to say or anything to bring up.
Before you get to town hall, may I make one comment regarding the Invision Walnut Grove? And that is that the post office is lacking. The cards went out, I know, almost two weeks ago now. And I know that our neighborhood does not have their Invision Walnut Grove postcard as do a few other people that have not received one. So I'm just asking the citizens and anybody in the know about it to please continue to pass that word, let them know, then pick up a card at city hall or go online and see what's going on to, but pass the word to make sure everybody knows that it's coming up since it's coming up pretty soon.
Yes, a lot of the businesses have those, the flyers. I'm going to get over to see you tomorrow, make sure you have a stack of them. And one of the gas stations also. I didn't try to get over to them today, but I just couldn't, so I'll be seeing him in the morning also. So yeah, if anybody is interested, you can always call city hall too. We have a lot of new residents moving in and when they come in and they're asking for garbage cans, I always pop out and welcome them to the city and try and give them a little bit of a feel of what's going on in the city and the exciting things that are happening for all of us. So it's really good. Thank you, Nancy. Okay, town hall, we'll back to town hall. If anybody has any comments, questions? Yes, ma'am.
I'm so grateful to all of you for giving the raise to the Public Works Department. They do an amazing job with our library. The library has never looked so good. It looks amazing, it's well cared for. Anytime I need anything, I call them and they are there to help out. And the peace of mind that provides and knowing that I'm not the only one that cares and wants to take care of it and make it look good, that means everything. But also all of you appreciating their hard work, that means a lot too. When it's freezing out, when it's sweltering out, they are working very hard. So thank you for acknowledging them. I don't think they get appreciated enough. So thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Couldn't agree with you more. Anybody else have anything to say or any ask question or? Okay. I did want to add one more thing, guys. I'm sorry. We have a new guest with us tonight. Actually, we have, I think, two new guests with us tonight. But one person I met is Mr. Jim Thompson and he is working with the Walton Tribune. And he has been asked to cover the city of Walnut Grove.
Yeah, he's kind of like lost.
Yes, so we talked a little bit about the Invision Walnut Grove. I told him about the ball fields on the way out, he wants to get a picture. But just so if you see Mr. Thompson around, you'll know who he's, what he's doing. He's here with the Walton Tribune. And I think it's amazing and fantastic that things are happening in the city, enough so that the Walton Tribune feels like they need to have somebody come out here and keep an eye and use the reporting on it. So it's very encouraging. Thank you for coming.
Yes, ma'am.
And because I don't try to ignore anybody. Ma'am, are you a citizen?
Yes, I am.
Are you new or you've been here for a while? Have you been to a meeting before?
A few years ago.
Okay.
Yeah, I live on Parsus Cemetery Road.
Okay. Well, welcome. What is your name?
Lester Buckingham.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Just so you know, anytime you have a question or anything, please feel free to call city hall, come by and ask a question. We're always willing to help, okay? And it's, it's nice to see you out tonight. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on with council comments and we're going to start with Ms. Erica Miles tonight.
I'm talking for a while, my brain is so full and stuff, I'm like, I don't know what to say. But I know that our city and mayor and I know that um, our city and mayor and um, I know that Rachel Davis has really stepped up and really helped so much with the city and I just appreciate it so much. So, thank you.
Ms. Davis.
Next Tuesday, six PM. Come to Church at the Grove. Come and hear what's happening here in Walnut Grove and Fulton County. And we will hear from DOT and talk about the future and get ready to join our vision Walnut Grove. I'm super excited about this. Looking for everybody's input.
Absolutely. And the workshops are not going to be sitting there. They're going to be interactive workshops. You're going to be asked pinpoint, what do you think are these architectural, about these architectural looks? What is your favorite? What is your work? Where do you think we should have a restaurant? Where do you think we should have a new business? Should we have these kind of businesses in the main park? It's very interactive. I've been to these workshops and another city before. And the person putting it on Marilyn Hall and Hall Consulting, it's very interactive and she asks for lots of feedback. So you are going to be heard if you come and we hope you do. Thank you. Trying to get that in there. You're like a pilgrim.
I don't really have anything, except I don't like winter and I don't like cold weather.
We're lucky you're here tonight, Ray.
Because I don't do it. I wouldn't like it.
Thank you, Widdow. And Ms. McLeod, hand.
I, first of all, I, I want to thank everyone that stepped up to do their part during our huge snowstorm. Thank that it was as light as it was, but I know that uh, sheriff's department really stepped up in my neighborhood. They came and moved people when we lost our lives because we have so many elderly. And our oldest resident in Walnut Grove, uh, without life, we were concerned about her and so they moved her uh, for, on behalf of us to another home for the evening to take care of it. And they kept a good check on us and I know that our crews stepped up and got out and helped and kind of checked on everybody. Uh, and that all the neighbor, different neighborhoods were talking back and forth, helping one another. And uh, so that was a pleasure to see them too.
Thank you. Tony, do we have any executive session tonight?
We do not.
Okay. Well, with that in mind, I will ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Unanimous. Thank you all for coming tonight. Appreciate it. And thank you, everybody online for watching.